Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, September 10th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Ariza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Agazi. Malay.
Here.
Uwe.
Here.
Sarum.
Here.
Vocal singer. That's thirteen.
Reminder, if you come up, use the microphone to adjust the mic, make sure you can see the green light on it and hear the, your speech behind you so that way we know you're getting on the broadcast. Item three is approval of minutes for August 27th, 2024. Anybody have any changes or anything they saw? Can I get a motion?
No move.
Okay.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is item four, items removed, added or changed. Do we have anything this evening?
No.
All right. Move on to item five, matters from the public for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. We have anybody for that? Nobody's online. Okay. Move right on to item six, the consent agenda. I'll run back.
Honored, the consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2024-120-R, awarding a contract for city facility improvements to Everlast Blacktop Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $470,000. Resolution 2024-122-R, approving a contract with electric conduit construction to perform 13, 35 KV underground circuit upgrade along Kirk Road between Hubbard Road and Douglas Road in the amount of $62,715,715, which includes a 10% contingency amount. I would move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, motion carries. Okay, then we'll move on to item seven, which is ordinance 2024-59, conditional use for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based at 1183 Pearson Drive, Unit 108. Mohammed Al-Sali, applicant. Good evening.
Evening. On August 21st, 2024, the Plant Commission's zoning board appeals conducted a public hearing for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based at the property located at 1183 Pearson Drive. This property is zone general industrial and requires a conditional use permit for this use. Mohammed Al-Sali of Pristine Motor Corp. has applied for conditional use permit to allow this use inside Unit 108. The applicant has operated his auto repair shop in Batavia since 2020 at 735 Hunter Drive and has operated a motor vehicle sales establishment at other locations in Illinois historically. He is looking to relocate that motor vehicle sales establishment to the city of Batavia, to a location that is close to his current operation. This is something that he would, has been working on with his father and has explained that he intends to operate this on a Monday through Saturday timeframe and intends to have approximately five vehicles stored within the building at any given time. You know, the space historically has been used for vehicle sales. Previously, it was Barnaba Autosports, so a component of his businesses, for his Porsche business, was auto sales on top of his restoration and repair service. This location would only be for vehicle sales. No repairs will be conducted at this site as he has an operation on a different location. Staff has proposed in the conditional use that if the applicant seeks to expand his operation for motor vehicle sales or repair services at this location, that he comes back and seeks approval, just to assure that there is enough parking since it is a multi-tenant industrial building. The applicant is here in attendance if the committee has any questions for him.
Anybody have any questions? We've got to be getting a few, few more of these. I mean, this is probably what, the fourth or fifth, I think we've had in the past probably two years?
We've seen quite a few. I will say, two of them were the relocation of already existing operators. Barnaba Autosports moved around to a standalone building and then Luxury Auto Finders, which is on Paramount Parkway, was already operating in the community prior to our requirement of a conditional use. So he was, with his relocation, he was required to seek a conditional use. But there has been, you know, I guess, an uptick of these applications in recent, I guess, time.
Anybody has any questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-59, conditional use for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based at 1183 Pearson Drive, Unit 108.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, motion carries. Who was the second on that?
It was Tony, I think.
Tony, okay. Then we'll move on to item eight, which is resolution 2024-123R, approving task order number six with V3 Companies for North River Street, Fox River Trail ramp design for an amount not to exceed $199,980. We're going to fix that over there.
Thank you so much. So this is a project that the city council has been talking for a while and based on the direction provided by the city council, we have solicited a proposal from V3 because the design engineer that works for V3 now, he was originally involved as the primary designer for the North River Street project. So we thought he's a good candidate to continue the Rivers, North River Street project and kind of incorporate this because he can, knew that this is coming and he has that knowledge from the previous project. So we solicited with him saying, give us a proposal to do a ramp because currently any bicyclist, they have to carry their bike up and down the stairs. So kind of like a switchback or some kind of a ramp so that the bikers can just continue their biking and don't have to dismount from their bike. In addition to that ramp, there is a storm sewer that goes underneath the Paul Joyce Building, the restaurant over there. So previous North River Street project had a manhole put in, in the ramp now, ramp in a sense, the ramp that goes to the stair right now. So we did put in a storm manhole there, so we were gonna, the plan was to redirect that storm into that manhole and ultimately to the river. So we'll try to incorporate that also in this project so that, because we have to go to IDNR, we have to go to US Army Corps to get permits, so get out for permit at the same time and incorporate all that as one design. So they provided a proposal, it's $199,000. It's a little bit eye-opening to us. We didn't expect it to be so much, but we did have some discussion with the consultant. There is some unknown, like how long the IDNR permit might take, you know, what it might entail, they might ask for more than what needs to be. So we said, okay, we'll do it as a not-to-exceed contract. That means if they finish at $150,000, then it's $150,000. But we'll manage the hours, make sure that they are within those hours that they have specified. So these type of projects are difficult because these are not our typical, you know, projects that you can tell how many hours it will take. So, so that's the proposal about the budget. It was not budgeted this year. However, we know that some of the projects that are funded from the TIF budget are not proceeding forward, so you don't need to do a budget amendment at this, at this time. The savings from those projects can be used for this project, so we'll start the budget, design, and we'll budget in 2025 for the remaining design and the construction portion of the project. Because I think there is a desire to construct this project by end of 2025, to spend the TIF money, so.
Anybody have any questions? I have one. Are we planning to look at what we could do with the stretch to the south that borders the river on the east side and how we can get that, to try to keep that from flooding?
That's not part of the scope here.
I understand that, but that's something that we need to consider because if that's flooded for a month or two out of the year, the money that we're spending in doing work on this doesn't make any sense to me until we make sure that we can utilize the rest of that, or else it's just, you know, a switchback and a way to get down to the water.
So my understanding is that particular stretch is owned by the Park District?
Okay.
And that would be, you know, why we didn't at first look at that. In fact, we, in previous years, in looking at how to solve the issue with the stairs, came to the same conclusion that the stairs were the Park District's stairs and so we would wait until a developer came in to solve the problem. But then engineering came up with this idea about creating a switchback on our own property that could alleviate the issue of bicyclists having to use the stairs. And so that's why we selected this project. I think we should still talk with the Park District and try to find a solution to that because you're absolutely right that that's such a shame when we can't use that stretch when it's flooded. So we'll continue to work with the Park District to seek a solution to that.
Right. Any other comments? Not? I will make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 2024-123R, approving task order number six with V3 Companies for the North River Street Fox River Trail ramp design for an amount not to exceed $199,980.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number nine with, which is resolution 2024-121R, authorization to purchase a Plow Dump Truck. Just got that tonight. Okay, I guess I'll take it. It's like we're in this situation again where we can't get the dump trucks through the normal channel, so we're going to go ahead and order another one, I believe, from the same company. We got the last two from them. So does anybody have any questions on that? Understand the realities of, we have trouble trying to find equipment and this is one of those that we have that deal with. And to have just, to me, a 2% increase over what the last one was, pretty shocking that it's only that small. Okay, no other comments? Then we will, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 2024-121R, authorization to purchase a Plow Dump Truck.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, and that can go on, consent agenda as well. Item 10 is ordinance 2024-060, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the sale. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, then I will make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024-60, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing sale.
Second.
Okay, and just so we get it on the record, it is three Escape hybrids and a Kohler standby generator.
2008.
2008 for Escape hybrids.
Yeah, and they still work. Okay.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and that too can go on consent. Item 11 is a presentation by Batavia Main Street request for additional funding. Beth, it's your turn.
Hi, thanks so much for having us tonight. We're going to get our presentation going. All right. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. This year, Batavia Main Street celebrates 25 years in downtown, so Kristin and many of our board members are here to share our vision for the future and to ask for additional investments so we can be here for many, many more years to come. Downtown Batavia has seen much change in growth over the last several years. Similarly, Batavia Main Street has adapted our current objectives to meet the community and the business owners' needs, like in ways, in ways like offering programs and events that bring people downtown on a regular basis, not just a few times a year. These includes things like our markets and the boardwalk shops. We focused on attracting new business through our markets, boardwalk shops, and regional marketing and have added more support for existing businesses through promotions, community connection opportunities, and training in an effort to retain them. We know that Batavians love Batavia and so we've continued to provide volunteer and community engagement opportunities to foster that community pride. And we've contributed to the beautification and navigation of downtown by creating flag banners, downtown directories, and wayfinding kiosks. Main Street currently has three employees, one full-time and two part-time, Kristin and We also have three contract workers who help us at the, at the weekly farmer's market with their operations. As our programs and events have grown, the demand on staff for each, staff time for each program has also grown. We are continually looking at ways to expand our programming, events, and promotions in a way that align with our mission and bring additional eyes on Batavia. New things we've added this year include the Wednesday Night Farmer's Market, the Restaurant Guide, which now lives on our website and continues to receive over 40 views weekly, the Holiday Sneak Peek and Gift Guide, and a focus on regional marketing. Batavia Main Street's projected expenses for regional marketing in 2024 will exceed $22,000 compared to just $7,000 last year. And these include ad spends like for radio and digital audio ads, as well as social media and Google Ads. And we have an upcoming paid spot in WGN this November to promote our Holiday Sneak Vacancies and fill, excuse me, as vacancies have filled downtown, the need to retain and support existing businesses has become part of what Batavia Main Street's everyday focus and operations. We work on business development through marketing and promotion at events and our, in our e-newsletter, website, and socials. We offer connection through networking opportunities like our quarterly merchant meeting and celebrate success awards banquet, as well as education with training and informational sessions. We make it clear how businesses can participate with Main Street and benefit from our free services with these annual flyers that are handed out each year. In addition, we visit the businesses regularly with nearly 500 businesses last year, visits last year. We received a heartfelt email from Joe, the owner of New Moon Vegan, that she agreed we could share with you this evening. Joe stated that they have benefited economically through sales and exposure at Batavia Main Street's events, which are well-beloved arts, culture, and all-around gathering events for Batavians. Their experience with Main Street events are that they are well-organized and in tune with the community's needs and wishes. They feel that Batavia Main Street also supports them through marketing efforts, including social media, crafting consistently engaging and genuine content that directs locals their way. They said that this free marketing by Main Street has boosted sales massively, impacting their small business in today's economy. Illustrating Joe's comment, we underwent a website redesign, which you're seeing here, in 2023, to create a website that better served the businesses, community, and those just looking to visit Batavia. Our website directory can be easily searched by business name and category. We feature a different business each month in our Meet the Merchant section, which helps develop community connections with the business owners. Our community calendar, pictured on the right, can be viewed by day, week, or month. The downtown businesses submit their events to us monthly and we import all of this into the calendar, providing a one-stop shop for all downtown happenings and easy planning for outings in downtown Batavia. With the new website and regional social media and Google Ads, we've seen a 59% increase of active users on our website in 2024. We have seen consistent growth with our programs over the last five years. The farmer's market has seen an increase of 62%, and we added the Wednesday Night Market this year. These events bring over 3,000 people to downtown on a regular basis, weekly. The indoor market has increased by 54% and the move to Granology last season nearly doubled our attendance. And with the artisan collective, we saw, we've seen 113% growth with 38 vendors in 2019 to 81 this year. In addition to bringing people downtown regularly, these markets are, also have economic impact. According to the Cornell Cooperative Extension Studies, consumers may be enticed to shop at other businesses near the farmer's market. These indirect sales have been estimated to be about 58 cents on every dollar spent at the market. Based on the attendance numbers, if market goers spend just $20 at market, this would bring an estimated $800,000 in sales to the downtown businesses annually. The boardwalk shops also play a significant role in driving tourism and contributing to our downtown economy. This year, we've had visitors from over 190 unique zip codes, proving that it is, proving its value as a destination. The annual boardwalk sales average about $350,000 and which totals over 1.6 million to date. This program has filled seven vacancies, continuing to increase taxable revenues in the downtown district. In addition to our programs and events, here are some other ways we contribute to the success downtown. We send a weekly e-newsletter, including information and happenings sent to us by the businesses. Our subscriber list has grown 144% this year with an open rate of over 45%. To put this in perspective, the industry average open rate is just 32.5%. We've created guides to serve as a resource for those visiting downtown, like our Holiday Gift Guide, which has had over 1,000 unique scans, and our Restaurant Guide, which has had over 1,500 unique scans and continues to be used weekly. We maintain the downtown directory and directional kiosks, which feature our downtown businesses and are updated with new businesses on a regular basis. As detailed in the Transformation Strategy Report distributed to you all before, Main Street America helped us to identify goals to continue growth and expansion. We're pleased to see that much of this aligns with the city's own downtown plan. Some of these things would include establishing connectivity downtown. Main Street would like to explore other walking events to get people inside businesses, things like the Sippin Shop or Progressive Dinner. And we'd also like to develop a comprehensive resource guide for new and existing downtown businesses to have making, to make having a business in Batavia as straightforward and easy as possible. We'd also like to provide additional opportunities for volunteer engagement, things outside of traditional committee roles, like a downtown hype team. We know that our businesses cannot rely on sales from Batavians alone. For this reason, we'd like to continue our regional marketing and tourism efforts. Main Street staff is currently at capacity. An additional investment would allow us to expand staff to keep our current programs and events at a high standard and work on the new initiatives recommended by Main Street America and help move the city closer to their goals outlined in the downtown plan. Here's our current funding structure. As you can see, the city and SSA contribution has not increased in over 15 years. With the waste service contract change, we no longer have in-kind agreements for porta-potties and hand station, hand washing stations at our events, and we no longer have access to the Park District's fencing and tables. This has increased our expenses by $13,000 annually. On the, I lost, okay. On the left is Main Street America's recommendations for diversified funding for a sustainable program. They suggest public or city funding to be 30 to 50%. On the right is our current funding breakdown. The city's contribution is currently at 15%. An additional $40,000 investment from the city, or a total of $80,000, would bring us much closer to Main Street America's recommendation at 26%. By continuing to invest with Batavia Main Street and our growth, you will recognize the work that we've done in the last 25 years and make our vision for the future of downtown Batavia possible. So now, do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Great job. Actually, at a car show this weekend, I ran into a couple that were staying down the hotel next to the Roundhouse, and that's what they found to do Saturday morning was to come up here and go through the market and, you know, after identifying myself from Batavia, they did say that they are coming back because they only got through half of what they saw here and they wanted to experience the rest of it when they saw the boardwalk shops as they were going out. So, you know, it is amazing to me, the reach that I've noticed over the last several years of how many different people or groups that I see here on a weekly basis or, you know, sometimes bi-weekly if I'm not down there every weekend, that, you know, that's something that we have to figure out how to expand to benefit the rest of the downtown or to have different things that could happen, which Main Street could do. So I would be all in support of trying to figure out how we're going to increase funding and where that's going to come from. Sarah?
Thank you guys for all you do. I love the information you gave about the regional marketing and how successful that really was. I would love for you to be able to continue that and be able to expand the network of people you have working on that. How was the Wednesday night market received by attendees and vendors?
The vendors were happy. I mean, we, we told them that was going to be a slower-paced market and it's still a matter of getting the word out. We were happy with the first-year attendance and, you know, multiple vendors said that they would come back and it's only going to grow with time.
Looking at the numbers of how things have grown at Artisan Market since 2019, that's insane.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, and I want to say that that is like a direct correlation with the amount of staff time that we invest in it, that we have been able to grow those things.
Yeah, I want to echo the thank you. You guys do a fantastic job and, and I don't, I don't think you get the recognition enough and definitely not, in my mind, from a financial perspective. I actually thought it was a little bit more than that that we were giving you guys. So, you know, I think in anything else, when we see numbers like this, I mean, I'm seeing 60% growth, 144% growth, you know, 190 different zip codes, all these things that are exponentially good, you see the list of, of all the different activities and things. These are all the things that are making the buzz of our community. I know I've said some of this before, but, I mean, this happens in the business world, which is where Main Street kind of lies. I mean, this is when you double down on something like this because I think that, I mean, I want to challenge us to go above and beyond. I think they've gone above and beyond for us for years with 15% funding when other towns are giving 50. I, you know, I'd like to see us at, at a nice round $100,000 for them and, and see what we can do. And fantastic job, but I want to give you more than 80.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I get to see your work firsthand regularly and I know you are well-received in the business community, the small business community. And I think what you've created is a very attractive downtown. That is, we're seeing businesses coming to Batavia for lots of reasons, but I think what Main Street is doing with all of these programming and assistance to small businesses is very attractive to other people who might have businesses in other towns and they're coming here because they're like, we love what's happening in downtown Batavia. So I think there's many numbers that you did not even include up there that the city is benefiting from because of what you're doing. So, thank you.
I would just like to say how much, from a city staff perspective, that we appreciate the collaboration with Main Street. I think when you look at the numbers up there, if the city was to either hire staff or a consultant to do the same things that our Main Street organization is doing, we would spend a lot more than $100,000 on that.
Probably worse results.
Exactly. Because, because that person, if they were an employee, would make them do a million more other things. Whereas having a Main Street organization, this is their mission. They have one focus, making our downtown great, and they've been doing such a great job of it, so.
Yeah, I had the opportunity on Monday morning to be in a meeting over in Oakbrook with, I think it was 17 other mayors from the region. And the conversation going around the table got going about things that were And the conversation going around the table got going about things that were exciting and interesting, and the Batavia Farmer's Market came up. And I had three of the mayors in the group, after the conversation, ask me, "What was the secret to this thing? How do they do it?" And so I had suggested to all of them that they should probably come call me some Saturday morning, and I'll meet them out here and give them a personal tour of it, because it's the best way to see it. And then I had a call from the fire chief up in Capron, Illinois, which is four miles from the Wisconsin border, up north of Belvedere. And he wanted to know what were the hours of this thing, because he was going to get up and bring his wife down here next Saturday morning. So the reach of this thing has gone far beyond Batavia, and I certainly want to join in on those who are supportive of us doing the right thing. As you know, right now, we're working on the budget, and I think, you know, we've got to have the staff do a little looking at this and figure out where we could move some money around, or additional monies that are coming in. But with the things that are happening, I think we are going to have some additional revenues coming in, but there's a lot of ideas at the table from other people with other ideas, so we've got to be careful with it. And those will be some of the key decisions the council's going to have to make in the next couple of months here as we finalize a budget for next year. But I'm all for what I've just heard from this group, and it's already been said, they really have turned this thing around and have really made the Batavia Main Street program shine well beyond the borders of Batavia. So, thank you.
Thank you.
As Tim so nicely offered more. Negative negotiate, and I'm going to try to pull it back for one thing. If we go extra, what are the chances we can get Oktoberfest back?
Oktoberfest is just such a bear for such-
Our organization, and it's a three-day event. I mean, maybe if we could build, but we really feel like our best efforts are put towards the business retention and economic development piece of it, that we can really help.
I think the, you know, the thing with Oktoberfest specifically is that I know that the community did enjoy it, but largely, the feedback we've gotten from the businesses is that they didn't enjoy it, and we're really trying to stay true to our mission and helping to serve them and bring people downtown to patronize them. And we have pints by the pond now.
Fair enough.
Progressive Oktoberfest.
That could be your walking event.
Yeah, make that a walking event.
Yes.
Jen?
So, you know, I like everything that I've seen. You know, I definitely do believe in investing when things are going well, and I think that, you know, the focus on really retaining our businesses and making sure that we keep them there, that helps build their group and everything. The one thing that really stands out to me is the sponsorship and grants, and my question is more directed towards Laura. Since we do have that scholarship, is there something that we can do to support them from a grant and sponsorship standpoint? Because I'm sure that you guys have a pulse on some of those grants out there, and do we have that opportunity to provide that assistance? Not that I would be like, "No, I don't want to give you the money," but-
So as a matter of fact, we have used a part of those funds that you set aside. We call it from the ARPA funds, but really, we use all of our ARPA funds for our water projects. So we really designated a couple hundred thousand dollars from our general fund to use in support of our businesses, to try and help them to recover from the effects of COVID. And recently, we worked with Main Street piloting a program, as a matter of fact, that was kind of similar to the scholarship program that we are also assisting Chamber with. We provided them with funding to hire a consultant to do for, I think it was for 15 business owners, an in-person event, and then that would be followed up by four hours of personal consultation with a mind toward growing their business. So we do collaborate and provide funding for programs like that with them.
But also the grant writing, because we do have that. We approved a scholarship for grant writing.
We actually hired a consultant who does grant writing, but they would only do the grant writing for City of Batavia. We can't add in other organizations to that. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, like, is there an opportunity to maybe consider that down the road, to provide that assistance to them for that niche? You know, and to kind of go along, you know, the events and programs, you know, it has to be right for the businesses. You know, there's some events and programs that are nice because we're just making it nice for the people, but it has to be right for the businesses. And, you know, any of those events to do that, I have to tell you, one of my favorite ones that I did was at the holiday time, when we had to go around and collect the ornaments. That made me go into places I'd never gone in before and to purchase something. But that was probably one of my favorite programs. I don't know if you can do it again, but that is the type, it sounds like that's the type of thing that you would need that assistance with.
Thanks.
I do just want to briefly say that we have been working together with them. We've had some conversations around some grants that have come up in working with Main Street, and we've offered that assistance as well. So we keep an eye on some of the stuff. And, you know, for example, one of the grants that we worked on, or we've been talking about, is a T-Mobile Hometown Grant. It's up to, I think, $50,000, and it's through Main Street America as well. And so we've been looking at some ideas, and I think we're going to be putting in something probably either this quarter or next quarter, probably.
That was going to be one of my questions on the grant side of this, is if the city were able to identify something that would be a grant that would be applicable to Main Street, and then we were able to get that grant and pass it through-
Sure.
-to Main Street, that may be a way to do that without actually having to go and say, "Hey, it's part of our grant writing contract. We want you to do X number of hours for Main Street." But the fact that they're looking for all those grants all the time, and if they find something that would be applicable, then I think that would be something we could add on to that.
Peggy would have me say, it's better for us if we apply for a grant than we just use the grant, because when you use sub-grantees, it becomes very complex in the reporting of it. We're fine with doing that, though, if there's a project that contributes to our downtown and that the city pays for that. Oftentimes, grants are only available to not-for-profits. So in that case, the city is ineligible to apply for the grant, but we can help by providing all kinds of data and support for their grant application, including asking all of you for, you know, letters of support for projects like that.
Yeah, and I guess I have sort of a comment, followed up with a question. You know, having spent years in nonprofit, getting a grant then consumes your time, right? Grant reporting becomes sort of half, sometimes 75% of the job. And what I'm looking at here, you'd sort of asked for this money specifically for staffing. Do you have a sense of how much of this staffing funding, and, you know, we can kind of spitball it, I'm not going to expect anything specific, but how much will this allow you to leverage then future funding outside? Will you be able to use this new staff time, these new staff hours, to turn our $60,000, $40,000, $80,000 into $100,000, $200,000?
So one of the things that we would like to do is build our capacity. We can't offer new events, our new things, like the Progressive Dinner or the Sippin Shop, because we are at our capacity. But if we had Kristin up full-time and up Kathy's hours, then it would allow us more time to create more things. It's just at this point, we're doing a lot.
And we have seen similar events in other communities, like a Sippin Shop that brings in upwards of $80,000 per event. So, you know, don't hold me to that the first year out, but yes, I think there is absolutely opportunity to turn that investment into more funding for the organization.
And then in turn, so, well, and in turn, then we could do some capital improvement projects and just keep working on all the things. I don't know if you remember in the Transformation Strategy, one of the things that they talked about was the cultural trail and trying to fill those gaps, and that's really something we love to work on and invest in, but without additional time, it's really hard to make that happen.
The one approach that could be taken based upon the presentation that we've seen today is an incremental one, to start with the additional 40, and then, you know, in future years. Because I do think that one of the things we're seeing on the revenue side is we've seen some businesses with high retail tax potential join our community, but we're not sure of exactly what the impact of those are yet without a full year of receipts from them, as well as others who are in their build-out phase and, you know, have not yet opened their doors. And so that may offer some opportunity for additional funding that could be put toward Main Street.
What kind of, it was $13,000 in additional fixed costs, correct? Because of something that went down with the Park District? Can't use their stuff anymore?
Yeah, two-part, yeah, two-part. Change over the garbage change. So we're now renting porta-potties for events in the boardwalk and the farmer's market. And then, yes, fencing. Fencing is very expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, that, to me, right there is just, you know, I think that's just a, that's just a flat fixed cost, you know, I think above and beyond. So I agree with you, but I think that fixed cost eats up a ton of what, you know, additionally they want to do. I mean, they don't want to get this extra money and pay for fencing and porta-potties, you know? So just a thought.
There's ways to help without actual cash. We talked about eliminating fencings with the DORA and stuff. Is some of this fencing, would it be available to eliminate?
It's for the large events.
And what qualifies, at what point do you need to have fencing, and what point does it qualify for a DORA?
200 or more people is what we're considering a larger event. Now, the Rhapsody in the Park concerts, there's sometimes 100 people, there's sometimes 250 people. It's hard for us to know how many people are going to show up in an event, but for the last two years, we have said that the Park District doesn't need to put up fencing for that event, and it has been without incident. I think that they just serve wine at Rhapsody, though, so.
But is that our law, or is that state, is that just, we've been doing it for so many years, so we just keep doing it?
No, it's a local rule, so that we can control alcohol not traveling outside of the event.
I'm still up for eliminating fences.
Agreed, and this is not something to hash out now, but some of your events are ticketed.
Like cocktails in the park, where it's-
Very much, yeah.
Where it helps control who's in there.
And then the largest expense is the block party, getting the fencing for that event.
And the Park District is required to get fencing for Windmill City Festival.
My mind's going down this idea of sort of a phased-in, you know, increasing funding over time. And again, I'm kind of coming back to the staffing side of this. From an HR perspective, you know, raising the amount of funds you get, maybe it's easier to hire someone full-time than it is someone part-time and promise them maybe someday down the line, they'll be able to work full-time. It's just the three of you, is my understanding. And so I guess I'm kind of wondering, and share as much or as little as you like, but what, if we go at the upper end, if we go at the $80,000, what sort of staff hiring and what's the lead-up time to that versus, say, the $40,000? Are we talking just bringing one person into full-time? Are you looking at hiring out a whole new person? What's sort of the internal side of that? Again, as much as you want to share.
Well, right now, I mean, we'd like to bring Kristin up to full-time. Kathy works between 18 and 20 hours a week right now. We'd like to bring her up to a minimum of 30. And then we also would like to have somebody who has Adobe skills to help us with some of our piece, and that would be a 10- to 15-hour person. So, you know, we feel like that is what we would need, that person and having that skill set on staff. However, we don't have, like, a full-time graphic design job.
That's like a one and a half, full-time, you know, one and a half position, creation.
Now, we're heading into the budget cycle, so we'll have to figure out how we do that. I'm leaning more towards the middle to the lower one to start with this year, because we really haven't had much discussion about, you know, where we're going to get this funding from. So I think we could find the 40 or the 60, I think, would be doable.
The other part of this is the SSA, I think I should bring up, is that the timing wasn't right for it this year, but Main Street, also under our ordinance, has the right to request up to $100,000 of funding from the SSA. So they would just need to request that next year. We would put out notice to all of the parties that are covered by the SSA, and then you could vote to use that as part of your funding for it, which, you know, again, maybe to have an incremental approach, we could do it that way.
The only way I would support that is if we're less than half of what the tax assessor has raised lately. So we're not just jumping on that bandwagon.
What are we using that SSA for?
Just for this, Main Street. It's a Main Street SSA.
Yeah, it raises the other $40,000.
And then if it's over $40,000, does it get returned? Is that, I'm trying to remember how that was set up. It seems to me that they're-
Peggy works magic-
Yeah.
So that exactly $40,000 is what King County provides us from the levy for that SSA.
There's that overlap with the SSA and the TIF, which we, you know, she then under-levis to make sure that we, you know, only do the $40,000. At one point, we had to refund it back to the property.
And that's maybe what I'm remembering, is that that happened. So I think I see agreement around the table here that we are going to increase it. I just don't know if we know exactly yet how far we're going to go.
That's good enough for us, yeah.
Abby? Sure?
Yeah.
Tony?
I'd just like to make a comment. I support as much funding as we can find for this, because I see it as a true return on investment. I've voted many times to continue to fund at $40,000, and the return that I have seen is phenomenal. And yes, I don't think a contractor could come even close to the things that Batavia Main Street has accomplished. So I will advocate to get as much as we can, because it is a return investment that we've clearly seen that return.
Nick?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we can maybe come to some consensus so they can leave here with at least some budgetary ideas. I mean, if it's just, you know, committing to the 80, great, but you had mentioned, when do you think we would see numbers where, you know, do we wait for the rest at budget time to see if we can do more? Or what does everybody think? I don't know. I'd like them to leave with a little more direction.
What is your budget cycle?
Ours is beginning of the year, January.
So we got-
Same thing.
How about if we just get two people to agree that we're going to say 60, and we're going to try and figure out how we get that into the budget this year?
Yeah, that's a hundred grand total.
For next year.
Right.
That we add 60 to it for next year. And, you know, we're-
You're just giving us direction.
Yeah, this is direction, and I'm not hearing anybody say no. So if we direct staff to do that, and then they figure that out, then we'll come back and vote about it.
Don't spend it all too fast. We've got budgets.
Yeah.
We've got to find it.
Yeah, we have to find it.
Oh, we'll find it.
All right, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
And then next year, until we get it in for next year, if you guys decide that you want to try and up the SSA a little bit, that would be something, one, first, talk it over with the board, make sure everybody's okay with that. Then reach out before you decide to do it and talk to the businesses that are affected by it.
There's a few other folks who have benefited from all of the programming and incredible things that are going on in our downtown. I can imagine that the apartments in those buildings aren't too hard to rent.
All right, I'm trying to figure out how to sign on to this, so you're really seeing my nepteness, so, do you know how to do that? All right, Kristin's younger.
A little dots.
There you go.
Let's say home. Thanks, Ellen.
You can just click on Agenda at the top, at the very top, the second tab.
There you go.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
It's not that it's not, 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 it's not that it's not,
It's not that it's scrolling up anymore.
Thanks, everybody else from Main Street coming down. Okay, now we will move on to item 12 for a continued discussion on the permit process and fee study. Scott?
Thank you. Just wanted to follow up with the permit process and fee study. We have had the time to look at this and review it and digest it, and I provided a memo to everybody. But in summary, you know, we are not surprised really by anything that came out of the report. We know that there are some things that need to be worked on in the department process, and, and, you know, we're willing and able to work on that. We just note a couple of things that when the study was done initially, keep in mind that it was, you know, it took a lot longer to get it done. And so when the onsite stuff was going on, we were under construction, we had fewer staff than we have now. So it was a little bit different environment than it is today. Since that time, we have hired a new person that has been trained. We also had a retirement, you know, during the initial review process. We have hired another person who started out at halftime, is now full time, or three quarters time. We will be requesting in our budget next year for that person to be full time. So we'll have three full time clerical front, front counter personnel to help out with processing permits. And then we also hired a full time building inspector, plan reviewer. So it's, you know, taken some time to get that person up to speed on that as well. But that certainly has helped with the permit processing and the timeframes that we've had, that we've seen with things. And I don't know about any of you, but I've, I've seen fewer complaints on timeframes and delays from people. I mean, obviously, there are some things that happen, but I think it's, it's been getting better since we've had that additional hiring happen here. So, but that said, you know, there's a, you know, a list of things that are in the study that, you know, are recommendations to make further improvements, and we are working on a number of those things right now. First of all, is the, trying to work with the software vendor and IT and our internal folks to try and put more permits online. We will be having a meeting about that later on this week, actually to talk more specifics on that, but that is one of the objectives we have, is to try and put as many permits online. Eventually, we'll have everything online, but, you know, you know, as we go on and try and, you know, get into other permits, some permits have more complexities with seminal requirements, scanning larger sized documents and those types of things. So that, that provides a level of complexity. So that is something that we are working on to try and get that, you know, expanded. Also is to try and get all of our files scanned. That is something we actually had a meeting about today to talk about. There is a level of complexity with that because our filing system has a number of components to it, I could say, because each, each file has multiple permits in it. It also has some code enforcement files. It has some zoning files in them too, because they're all based on addresses. So we need to adjust that as part of the scanning process to make sure that, you know, when you're indexing it, that we're able to search it and use it. Once we do that, that'll be great because then we can get rid of all of our paper files and we can, you know, free up basically another room in our department for, for additional usage. So we have something like 36 filing cabinets right now that we're using that we would be able to get rid of a lot of that paper and, and, you know, make it easier, plus searchable. You know, we'd, everybody would be able to search for permit information and documents that are out there, and that would be a lot easier for FOIA requests, but just for, you know, internal searches would save a lot of time for FOIA requests because we do spend a lot of time with that right now. So that would save us a lot of time there. We're also in the budget this next year, looking to do some additional training for front counter staff, to have them be a permit techs, so that they understand that, you know, the whole process. I mean, they understand the process, but this would be more formal process that would be through a training process here that we would, you know, hire, hire, or I should say, have them go through the, the classes and everything else would be required for that. So we think that would give them more expertise and give them the ability to handle things more upfront. We do have them already do a lot of things upfront. I think the, one of the things we disputed in the study is that they don't do some of the permit reviews, and that's not true. They actually do certain simpler permits such as, you know, HVAC type things, siding, roofing type permits, those things they already do that they, that don't go through a plan review process. So, you know, as, as we get into training and once they learn more about the process and what needs to be done, they may be able to expand into some more of that type of review on those permits as well. So that would save time for them as well as the public. And then also for everybody's edification, as well as just to make sure everybody on our staff is on the same page, we'll be working on some process flow charts. So those will be, some of them will be internal, but some of them will be external so that people can see is, you know, if I apply for a permit, it's going to be X days for it to be reviewed. It'll be X days for, you know, a comment letter, be X days if I have to re-review it or resubmit it, you know, you know, so it'll give people a general, a better timeframe. We give, we give people general timeframes depending on the type of permit and the workload, but it would give them more of a distinct understanding of like, okay, you know, I, I know that, you know, it's still in review because it has to go to the plumbing inspector, and it has to go through engineering and whatever the case may be and the type of permit. So this would give people a little bit more defined information as to, you know, what they have to do as part of that. So, so those are the things that we're looking at doing to try and, you know, make things better. There are other things, obviously, in the study that, well, we would be working on as time, as time permits. You know, once we get through some of these things, that'll, you know, free up some time, and then we'll be able to work on some of the other things that are in the study as well. It's just, we can't do them all at once. We just don't have the ability in the staff to do that. So, but we would be keep, you know, keeping this going as, as time goes on, sort of like the strategic plan. As we finish one goal, well, then we'll move on to the next one and try and, you know, complete some other things. So that's, that's the permit study. Also, in regards to the other study, we did the fee study, and the fee study was studying the neighboring communities of Geneva and St. Charles as to our permit fees. In general, we're on par. We don't, we're not really above too much, and we're not really below, you know, for the most part on our permit fees. So we are not proposing to make any changes to that based on that study. We think we're pretty comparable and, and, you know, in line with what everybody else is there. As the council recall, we did have a discussion about the variance fees in the past, and we kind of put that on hold based on when this study came out. So we will be bringing that back to you. That was not part of this study, but we do feel that there is a variance on the variances, fees that we have. So we would still like to have another discussion about that and talk about, you know, trying to make some changes to those, those fees. So, so that's the summary. You know, if we have any questions or if you have other suggestions, you know, we're more than willing to hear them and, you know, take them under advisement and, you know, take directions as needed.
I'll start off. I guess what I'd like to see is a list of the things that you, your department is now identified as whatever the priorities are from this study, you know, what things you're going to prioritize. Basically, give us a list so that we know, you know, out of this study, what we paid for to figure out what we want to do or change or what's going to happen, and timeframes for when you think you're going to address those, you know. And so that way, we have some way to measure, you know, what came out of this study, what's been identified, and where we think those things fall in a timeline of, you know, either changes or additions or whatever. We're going to try to do to, you know, fix some of the things that we've identified and, and be able to have some way to measure that, just like we do with the strategic plan or any other thing. So that way, we can come back in three months, six months, a year, and say, okay, these are the 10 things we identified. Seven of them are done. We've got three left to finish. You know, just, I think that that's good for anything we do like this, to have some way to measure the results from it. You know, how, how, how we, you know, we identify those things, put a timeline to them, you know, cost, whatever it is to it, and then figure out how to get it done.
Yeah, I think as part of that, you know, we, we will have to keep in mind that, you know, some of those things are going to involve time and money. So, I mean, that's, that's going to be part of, you know, anything that we put in there is that, okay, we're going to go and say this is going to be something we want to do next. You know, what kind of man hours or, you know, funding are we going to need in order to accomplish that? So, yeah.
And things we need to know. So that way, we can make sure that, you know, if it's a, you know, solution is, is funding, if we decide that that's the priority, then we'll make sure we figure out how to fund it.
We anticipated putting together a project plan for this that would be, you know, I think Scott today just wanted to hit both some of the highlights of the things that would have the most impact to be done immediately. But, you know, things that really didn't require additional funding at this point. Just to let you know, we're, we've already moved forward with the things that we brought up today.
That's correct. Right.
I think you're exactly right about keeping this on track and listing the objectives. I'm glad you're already on that. I would like to see, you know, before we leave this, because I still really want to dissect more into that.
Sure.
And get more out of it, but to set a timeline, and I don't know if we do this regularly, monthly, every other month, say, okay, you know, if, if we leave today saying, okay, in two weeks, we'll have an objective. Okay? And then every month, come back and say, okay, what did we achieve? What didn't we? And we have time to keep, you know, analyzing this. There's a lot of mention of, of labor and technology, but, you know, what procedurally can be done or what can be done in the field and things. I'm still, marinating is the old term, a lot of this. But I, I like that stepped approach and to keep this on.
Yes.
On the agenda frequently and seeing how we do.
Oh, I just wanted to address what you're saying. We've taken the report. We've taken every single recommendation, not only in that chapter seven, but wrote down everything in that chapter seven, but then went back through the document to say, because it seems like they were making some other more specific recommendations throughout the document. Put all of that into a document, said what kind of category of change is that, what departments need to work together to accomplish that. We need to then put timeframes to those things, and then we need to identify the resources that are going to be applied to that. And we're happy to do whatever periodic reporting on the progress of that plan that you guys would like to see.
Yeah, and that, and that's still kind of a work in progress, and it also involves, in some cases, other departments because, you know, as, as we're the one stop shop for permits, you know, because that's the most efficient way to do that, you know, we are the, what I'll call the gatekeepers of the permitting process. So, you know, we have to also work with other departments and, you know, follow up with things when things are not getting done and, you know, in the manner when we get it, need to get it done. So, you know, that, our department is the point entity for that, but we also have to follow up with others internally as well sometimes, too.
Along with the process and the study, I think it'd also be good when you're categorizing and breaking things down to do things like business permits versus residential permits. It's because from what I've heard of other people saying they've heard complaints, it would seem to be more geared towards businesses feeling like they're not getting the permits done as quickly as they could. I'm not sure, though. That'd be something else. I think that could just be broken down as the way to analyze the situation to see if one process works better than the others, because I'm assuming there's more complicated situations with business permits versus residential.
Yeah, I mean, by nature, you know, business permitting is much more difficult because there's more complexities, more things you have to meet in a certain, you know, different type of building code that, you know, the international building code is, is part of that. So, and then depending on what they're doing, it might involve a lot more engineering or public works type things, historic preservation in some cases. So there's, there's a lot more complexity with business than there is typically in residential.
And in that regard, you know, you're going to try to get a lot of things online. Maybe that would be somewhere to see if you could focus on things that would make certain things in that aspect easier. I mean, if it's going to be, if you get all these residential things online, then we can focus more of the tasks on business, or can we put a bunch of business stuff online to kind of narrow down that process when we actually have to do the actual physical labor? I mean, something to think about with the online stuff, to try to streamline whatever's needed, I guess, to make it go as quickly and as, you know, problem free as possible.
I think one of the areas for improvement is for people to be able to, be able to answer their questions through research on our website as well. So that's another, working with the communications manager to, you know, try to create some tools in that regard as well.
Like A Q type of thing?
Exactly.
With quick links.
Find your own adventure, sort of.
Quick links.
Yes, no.
Five things you need to get this permit approved.
Yeah.
Don't come in without those five things.
Well, that's the advantage of the online permitting, actually, is because, you know, you can't submit your permit unless you have all those documents in there. So, you know, if you don't have that document, you can't submit your permit. So, and that's one of the things that the study did say is, you know, one of the issues we have is incomplete permits, you know, people submitting stuff and not having every document. So then it sits in our office in a file until somebody does that, you know, completion. We don't feel that it's been very customer friendly to just say, no, you don't have anything, go away. You know, we basically said, okay, we'll, we'll accept your permit, but you need to get us this information. We try to set some timeframes, but, you know, we're also trying not to be, you know, an unfriendly department either by, you know, giving people time to, you know, to get the information they need to get to complete it.
As long as we're talking about budgeting for next year, too, I would also like to work in, in addition to what Nick and Alan were talking about, about the periodic check-ins, if we could have HR Green back in a year, too, to do kind of another round of check-ins with the folks that were interviewed and the comments that were received from both internal, staff internal, and then also maybe if there are contractors or businesses that have interacted with the city since to just say, like, has the process improved? Have you worked with them since? And do you see an improvement and get that perspective as well? And then kind of to advise, too, to council to say, here's what improvements have been made, and it seems to be working well, and here's where we can continue to go.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was just going to say, I mean, I know you guys summarize this, and thank you for doing that, because I know these reports can get crazy. But I, I mean, I think everyone's hitting on what's going through my head, as I was just expecting a little more detail. I mean, basically, to me, this says we need to go digital and we need training. I mean, I knew that, you know. It's, it's, why isn't everything digital right now? How quickly can we get there? What, you know, obviously, there's challenges there that you know better than anybody in terms of all the stuff that needs to go in there or whatever. But, you know, and then I don't know, you know, whether they heard from businesses, you know, I don't know whether they can come give a report to us on what their findings were, you know, in terms of those businesses, but that's really who I want to hear from. And unfortunately, we don't get enough of them in here. I've been trying to garner some people to come in and speak up their mind, because I just had a local business at my house just, just last week who was complaining about the process. I don't know enough about it, unfortunately, to, to, to give any good, but I did say we have a, a study coming up. So, yeah, just diving into it a little bit more and really, I, you know, I don't think we as a council need to get into the super minutia, but just to see what you guys are doing to get in the minutia. Obviously, you said you've made that list, you, you know, broken it down. I think it would be good for us to see, even though, you know, we might not understand some of it. It's just nice to see those little bullet points. And I think one of the benefits, I think, especially when you're talking about going digital with everything, is I think it'll be easier for us to track. Does it take a week for this process? Does it take two weeks? Does it take a month? And then a year from now, when it is different or has changed, did those numbers change? Did we, did we take away the timeframe that people were dealing with, that businesses were dealing with, you know? And is it, because I know it's not always our fault that stuff happens. But how do we change that communication so that that doesn't occur? Is there a way that we can figure out, hey, three weeks into this process, and we haven't heard back after we asked for four more pieces of information, how do we go back? How does our staff go back and get that answer so that that permit doesn't just sit on a shelf waiting for that information?
The beauty of digitization there is that exactly what you stated. It won't even hit their desk unless all the stuff is there, and it puts the onus back on the people who need to go get the stuff.
And it's very easy to track when it's there, too.
Right. And the complexity of some of that is this, especially when you get into the re-reviews. So, I mean, it's one thing for the actual initial and then, and then our initial review, but, you know, some, we send out a comment letter that has, you know, two page comment letter, whatever it is. Then it's up to them to respond to those comments. A lot of times, you know, people complain about the process, but, you know, there's a lot of delays that are on the applicant's end. So, you know, that's.
And just so we identify, the applicant may be the contractor who is doing the work. And so the owner of the business is asking the contractor, why is this taking so long?
And they typically will blame the city because they don't want to be blamed for the issue.
Right. And this is not always. We don't always get it right either, you know? I don't want to say that. That's why we're very dedicated to looking at what our process is, because we know there's bottlenecks in our process that happen. And through the training is part of alleviating that, but also to give people the visibility, you know. If, if you're an applicant, can you go online and see where are things at in the process?
Right.
You know, so you know when to expect things back. back, one of the things we're looking at is going to a hosted, and the hosted program for our online permitting seems to allow the applicant more visibility to what the status of their project is, without having to call and ask somebody what the status is.
Hundred percent, and I mean, exactly, and then I'll shut up, but the, you know, the example you gave is, and that's what I want to hear, because I don't know enough about it, in the trenches, you know, on what those actual roadblocks are, what are those choke points that are like, you know, and they could be very simple, I just don't know what they are, I'm not, I haven't put any permits in in Batavia myself, but, yeah.
One of the things I mentioned a lot in there is the, the software, they didn't really give any other recommendations, is it the right software, I mean, I've done, over my career, dozens of software replacements, because what you're using just doesn't meet the needs, and is that something you guys have looked at, I know that creates other problems, because now everybody has to learn the new system, but if it, if that short-term pain leads to like significant long-term gain, and makes it a lot easier, and you get better reporting and workflows and things like that, it seemed like, hey, there's a lot of stuff missing, but I don't even know if it can do what they said, or what they recommended.
And I'll let Jeff talk about that, but, you know, Llama is a very robust software program that, you know, more and more communities are using, and they've been very helpful and cooperative with fixing the software when we've had issues with it, it does a lot of things, and, you know, we're not even taking advantage of certain things for like certain licensing and things like that, so, it's been a very good program, I think, you know, keep in mind that H R Green has had very limited experience with it, because they were only here for some part-time, you know, aspects of things, so, they are not necessarily knowledgeable about how the software works, because it's not their software that they use, so, I don't...
Yeah, I think one of the things that did come out of the study in discussing with, with H R Green, and also discussing with our staff, is that there are some, there are ways we can use the software that we're not currently using it, to help our, to help our processes, so that, that's one of the things we're going to be working on also as part of this, is additional training for our staff on, you know, maximizing the use of the software as much as we can to, to help with those efficiencies.
Okay, yeah, great, that's, that's what I was hoping to hear, because changing software does stink, but if it does everything, and we just need to relearn it, that's, that's a, that's good, it's faster.
Yeah, and I've worked, I've worked in, you know, a number of communities, you know, I, you know, every building department is always the flashpoint for any community that I've ever worked in, that's just the way it is, right, and, but I've also worked with a lot of different software type, type things, and some work better than others, and so at some point, you have to look at it and say, okay, did we make a change, you know, or not, I think that, you know, Llama has a lot of benefits to it, it has a lot of opportunities, and has a lot of breadth for things that you can use it for, things that we're not using it for even right now, so, I think it's a pretty good software, no software is perfect.
No software is perfect, I was going to say that, too, that's, you trade one problem for another.
Exactly right.
So everywhere you've been, there's been a problem, I think we've found that.
I knew somebody was going to say that. Those problems were there before I got there. Nice try.
So, some of the, my, my personal concerns that, you know, we've talked about and stuff in the past was, things I was hearing was, you know, lack of communication and transparency and understanding and confusion, and so I know some of this addresses that a little bit, most of this is just very internal, and I do realize that once internally procedures and stuff get worked out, that I think naturally the customer service side will ease up, but, you know, I'm thinking immediately, and we've talked a little bit today about like flow charts and improving for residences, or residents and businesses to, to have better access, but, just to kind of keep that at the forefront of our minds, like, customer service, I'm just going to use that word here, continue really improving that as we do, you know, behind-the-scenes internal procedural changes, and then my other question was, with all this scanning of all the paper and all the I T stuff, can some of that be contracted out, because I'm just thinking, it is, okay, because I was just like...
It's going to fill a semi, oh, go to Kansas City.
Okay, I was just like sitting here being like, you guys aren't going to get any work done.
No, 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 okay.
That is why it hasn't gotten done up to now, because when we moved to the Laserfish platform, we had anticipated that the departments were going to do the scanning themselves, but kind of digging into the project, we're like, nobody has this time to do this much scanning, so, there's money in the budget.
Yeah, as we've, you know, talked about today, I mean, our file system has some complexities, more so than maybe other departments do, because we have different components in a file that aren't necessarily what other departments would have, so, you know, personnel file is a personnel file, but, you know, ours had permits that has code enforcement, has zoning stuff in some cases, has miscellaneous things that are in there, so, there's a lot of different things that come into, into play with our file system, so, I will say, though, one of the conclusions in the study was that we were great, giving great customer service, though, so, I mean, I will, you know, toot our own horn about that, you know, our front clerical people are definitely doing a great job of trying to help people as much as they, as they can, obviously, they have limited, you know, ability to do certain things, but, you know, they're trying to help people and facilitate things, so...
And that wasn't my concern, I don't think any individual person, I think everybody is very conscious of that, so it's just more of confusion with projects, or, you know, yeah, those type of things, and, you know, I might even suggest, as you're working with contractors and stuff, just open up that conversation, just be like, how, how is it going working for the city of Batavia, you know, and where, where, where was this confusing, or where can you, where do you think we can improve, and use that alongside of the study, just, because honestly, I wish, I, this is so beneficial, I would love for something like this in my business, like, just somebody coming and being like, here's all the ways you can improve, it'd be amazing, so, I, I think this is huge, so.
Stuff are all really excited to work on these things, it's just, you know, it's, it's hard when you're in the daily grind of people demanding the permits, and you know you've got to do the reviews, and it's like, we're going to, you know, stop and take the time to outline all of those stuff, I'm excited about getting to that, that place, this is all about having a customer focus, improving, while we have good customer service, we get so many compliments about, you know, our staff, but it's about the customer experience, too, right, and I think that that's what we're all trying to get at, but in doing so, I think we're also going to, you know, another thing they said in the report was how much people enjoyed working in the department and with each other, but they felt like they had more that they could contribute, so I think that a lot of the things that we're addressing right now as well, will help people to be able to contribute more in the ways that they want to, and help them grow in their positions, and, and prepare for the future, too, so, prepare them for even other roles within that department.
Just to recap before we commit to a timeline, thank you for saying that, because I think as, as this process started, there were some defenses and like, well, like, we're out to, you know, create a chopping block or something, and, and that approach from top down is really awesome, and that's what we hope to see and continue seeing.
One hundred percent, like we said, we don't think we saw a lot of surprises that was in here, that were in here, but at the end of the day, we said having a third party come in and say, you need to do these things, will help us, you know, say to the community, if we need more resources to be able to do this, if we want to be this type of department, we have to commit to these types of resources and time to doing the things that need to be done.
So, as to timeframe, obviously, we are still digesting the report to an extent, and trying to figure out priorities and things like that, these are the things that just jumped out at us to say, we got to do that, I would anticipate, you know, we would probably come back to you quarterly, you know, with an information as, as to where things are, and, and, you know, go from there, so. Right, exactly.
And that's kind of my question, how does this get rolled into the strategic plan? Because it could be very confusing to have multiple plans out there, so how can this get rolled into the strategic plan, so it can be kind of on the radar and working towards all those goals?
I think it was actually one of the strategies under the objective for community development.
I believe it was in there, one of the goals, to improve the permitting process or something to that effect, so, so it's in there already, this is just, you know, I guess it's no different than our downtown plan, our downtown plan has a list of things that we have to work on, and this is kind of the same thing, it's just that, you know, it's the permitting program, at some point, when we do the economic development, you know, strategic plan, you're going to have a list of things like that that you're going to have to work on, too, so each of these things are going to have separate components, strategic plan is, in theory, a larger document that covers everything, and you're going to have some of these smaller things that come, you know, as part of that.
Is that what's going to be presented to us, or is it going to be each of these little plans, because after a while, it might be like, what plan are we working on?
So, it cascades down, so for instance, another one of community and economic development's strategies that they're working on in the plan is implementation of the downtown plan, that has a whole set of recommendations in it as well, and community and economic development are actually thinking of utilizing clear plans where we've put our strategic plan, and putting in the objectives of that plan, we could see if maybe we could do something similar for this project plan as well, so, those plans are cascading down from this overall strategic plan, which we, and the same thing is true of our fire department strategic plan, so, we're trying to create that throughout our organization, that independent department-led projects kind of cascade down from the strategic plan.
And I would just add that online permits are one of the things in the strategic plan under effective governance and service delivery, so that's something we kind of anticipated, and that obviously goes hand in hand with what Scott has presented today as well.
I forgot, that was actually one of the ones that's, that's, as well, so, I knew that it was there, just mentioned it, so.
When can we book a review of that list and discussion about that list, and is it possible to do before budget season hits?
Well, we need to still, you know, review it and, and, you know, kind of put together our priorities, and then, then we can share that with you, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that during the budget season, to be honest with you, because, I mean, I got to get the budget done, among other things, so...
Let's have some internal discussion about it, and then I can report back on that during an upcoming project status, if that's okay?
I'm not, I'm not sure that, at least immediately, anything is going to be relating to budget things, I mean, the one budget thing we're going to be asking for is additional staffer, you know, the, the full-time staff person, so that's, that is one thing we'll be asking for, but...
Our time to full-time.
Correct, right.
Right. No, and I think you already got the bones of, of what it is, it's just, you know, kind of putting it up there and prioritizing together and keeping the discussion going.
We know where we're going, just how long is it going to take to get there? Thank you. Thank you. Right, now we'll move on to item 13, discussion on the single-use bag fee, year one.
So, Max provided memo and the statistics comparing the statistics over the course of the first year of the single-use bag, one thing I'd like to say is, while, you know, perhaps we didn't see much of a decrease over the time that the fee has been implemented, I read about the history of the Chicago bag fee, and they saw a similar thing, where they had done a lot of, you know, people in grocery stores counting how many people had, were using plastic versus single-use, we didn't have the advantage of that in our case, but what Chicago found was that there was sort of an immediate impact, people heard about the fact that the fee was coming, and they changed their behavior before the fee was implemented, and as the fee went in, it did stay pretty steady, the amount of revenue that they had been collecting, so, you know, I just want to throw that in there, that we shouldn't necessarily see the implementation, that, I'm sorry, the consistency of the number of bags that are used over time necessarily as an indication that behaviors were not changed.
Yeah, I'm happy to kind of answer any questions you guys may have about the data, I provided some additional data today as well, addressing the environmental commission's feedback, but yeah, I'm going to kind of let you guys have your discussion, and let me know if I can add anything.
Want to start?
I got a text message today from somebody asking, because apparently the, maybe the Kane County Chronicle or somebody had a nice headline saying, Batavia collects $200,000 in bag fees in the first year, and I didn't get the whole article even texted to me, it was just a screenshot of the headline, so...
They went on to say to use for green initiatives within their community.
So, I mean, I copied the link to our website and sent it back, saying, you know, this is what it's going towards, but, so, in terms of everything, I think we still need to make sure people know what the money's being, I mean...
And the article did a nice job of, it, it actually had the breakout from Max's memo, it had a lot from Max's memo in it.
It was, it was good, I'm just saying that people still just don't necessarily read, they read the headline, just get...
We do think that one of the things that will help is actually getting some of the money out and into programs and whatnot, we had to order more bags as well, because we've gone through them, and people are obviously using those, and so part of that will be, obviously, next year, audits and rebates will go out, we'll have the education campaign going, we'll have additional funding for Parkway Trees that people will be able to take advantage on, and then we'll also be doing some basin naturalization and restoration programs, so, people will start to see that these programs and the fees that were collected are being reinvested in the community on green initiatives, and I think that is something that, as they continue to see those investments, that'll help as well.
I would just ask the question, what are we looking at the data for, I mean, we're going to interpret it the way we want to, it seems, and is there something that we can see that will change, either change the plan, change who, who it affects, change whether we do it or not, is, is there something to see, or is it just kind of an exercise in futility?
I could tell you that Washington D C implemented a program, and they use the funding to improve a waterway within the community, they're like, whatever we raise from it, it goes to that, so, even if it never goes down, that's okay, because it's funding that we're using to do something to improve the environment within our community, and that alone is enough for them.
And that's fine, that's why I'm asking, what, what is the plan, the study's not necessary, we see the revenue, then let's focus on applying that, and we can stop wasting time studying, because it's not going to...
Well, and I think it's important that whatever we spend it on, when we do that, that we inform the public that, you know, hey, we bought 75 trees with this, or we did X number of acres of retention ponds, whatever we do with it has to, that has to go back so the public understands that that's what we're using it for, or else they're going to think we spent it on, you know, new monument signs, or whatever they, you know, enticing mattress stores, whatever they think is fun to post on Facebook, they'll do that, so...
Well, they don't care, we're just taking more money from them, why, why, what are we doing better with their money that they wouldn't do, and I know it's 10 cents a bag, it's the principle.
It's a choice, it's not a tax.
I know it's not a tax.
So that's a choice that they make.
But, why is that fee in place?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, we have to show that what we're trying to do with that is something better than just recycling a bag that they don't need to buy every time.
And especially if the bags aren't going down at a dramatic rate, if the bag usage isn't going down, we have to triple down on the messaging to people, because the whole idea is to bring down single-use bags, if it's not dramatically working, people are going to be upset, as I would have been, too, and will be, you know, I mean, we, we can't keep it if the bags aren't dropping, that's the point of this program.
I will tell you, I've actually noticed in other communities, now that we have a bag that's really easy to identify from Batavia, I've seen them, North Aurora at Woodman's, and I've seen them up in Geneva, so, to me, it's not, you know, and, and who knows what the actual penetration is as far as how many people actually have done it, because I still see people with shopping carts full of bags. Because I still see people with shopping carts full of bags.
I just know what's going to happen here. We're going to get comfortable with the money and then we're never, it's never going to go away. And whether bag usage goes up or bag usage goes down, we're going to keep collecting.
I think at some point it'll become a bigger ban, you know, or a bigger fee, whether it's the county or the state, somehow that will change. Or what makes economic sense to use for a bag.
Leah?
I have something else to say, but first I'll say, that was part of our initial discussion was we wanted to get ahead of this before it was implemented by county or state. In that way, we already had control of what we were doing. So that was part of that discussion. But going back to the numbers, as far as we can tell, was the number of bag usage before we implemented it in a year, was it like 4 million?
So I want to caution us too much against the original estimates. It was, it was a lot of guessing, but yes, that to Laura's point earlier, what was possible is we did see kind of a one-time drop off and then stabilization. We just don't know. But yeah, the, the original number was, the original number we projected was substantially higher than what we wound up with. So that is possible. We unfortunately don't really have a good way to measure that. But anecdotally, that probably aligns with what most of us as shoppers have done is we kind of swapped over to bringing our, our own bags and maybe once in a while we have to purchase a bag, but that is more than likely what may have happened.
Still 3 million bags used in Batavia alone in one year is, that's a staggering number. And I'm, I'm all for continuing to try to put, you know, get people, encourage people to use reusable bags. And I know there's a lot of discussion about all the other plastics, totally understand. We're doing a part and that's what we're, that's what we're put here on earth to do is our part. So, but I do think continuing to communicate that this money is being used directly for environmental funding to help Batavians and it's not going to other budgetary needs or anything.
Sure.
I wanted to echo a lot of what has already been said. Yes, the effects, I mean, if you go to the store, people behave differently. That is a win. You see people taking things in their hands, which they easily can carry and otherwise in the past would have gotten a bag. So we are, it's, you can see the proof, you can see it happening. And yes, I agree, messaging needs to say, this is going back to the community because that is, you know, the talking point. It's a cash grab. It's not going to the environment. Yes, and just because we can't solve every plastic issue doesn't mean that we shouldn't do anything. This is something.
I think the messaging has to be clear that these are things that we couldn't or didn't do before because we didn't have the funding. This isn't just like, hey, we're doing more of this because, that's why I'm not a huge fan of doing extra trees, because it's, we do that already. This should be like, here's unique stuff that we can now do because of this, not just, hey, we're planting more trees, because then people are like, eh, okay, great.
We also do the naturalized basins though, and I would hate to remove the funding that we're putting toward that.
There are new basins.
Maybe we come up with a project like you mentioned and everything follows towards that one thing and then that way it's, that's the beacon.
And that's an option you guys will have, is that some of these are kind of more one-time off projects. So you may choose, well, year one, we're going to fund those reusable bags. Maybe that's not something we do in year two. Maybe we reallocate some funds, but that's something you can think about as older people is how you want to do that. And some of these are designed to be more kind of one-offs, like, all right, we do a basin. Do you want to do another one? Do you want to move it to something else? What does that look like? Well, we may allocate some of the funding for annual maintenance of that basin that we've done, but those are conversations you can have amongst yourselves and kind of give staff direction as well.
Yeah, I want to make a couple of points here. Number one, the, the replacement bag that we now give away is extremely popular. I probably myself have given away 200 or 300 to people who have asked me to come and speak at church circle or whatever. I'll take in 30 bags and they'll all be taken. And everybody's a real appreciative of that. I think the use of that, that recyclable bag that we give away has been a real shot in the arm for people to help them understand what we're trying to do here. So I would encourage us to, if we're going to continue with the fee, we will use that as a real selling point that we're putting something out there. The other observation I would like to make is I try closely every day to read all the official reports of the city of Batavia. And I've never read in any report, any place that we've ever arrested, fined or done anything to any person that went into any store in this town and said, I'm not paying for that bag. And the store will probably give them the bag and away they go. And that's, that's the end of it. I mean, they're, you know, we're, we're trying to do something here that's friendly and cooperative. And I appreciate the way that the community has figured out how to handle it. And if you get somebody that really doesn't want to pay for the bag, you probably can get the bag and not pay for it. So that's just the harsh reality of what we're dealing with here. I was very skeptical of this program when we began, began it, but now that we have the recyclable bag and I see, you know, we've got something out there that's not going to be an environmental problem with having these bags and we're teaching a whole generation of older people about this, that why they should use these bags and they seem to be doing it. And every time I've been in the jewel, I see all these specifically older people coming in with five, six bags in their hand. Most of them are the BYO bag and they go up there and throw them on the counter at the jewel and they pack their stuff up and leave. So I'm not sure how much, we think we're going to make a lot of money on this in the future. I'm not sure we are because there's all kinds of things happening in reaction to this, including the people that don't want to pay the bag, just take the bag and go off. So it is what it is. It's interesting to me that our neighboring communities, I don't believe any of them are doing this. Geneva, St. Charles, North Aurora. And I think that in some respects, they use this against us a little bit and say, well, come down to Woodman's, you don't have to pay for the bag. And I don't think a lot of people really don't go because of that, but I mean, those are the arguments that you hear. And when we first started this, when I'd go out and speak to a group, a church circle or whatever, this would be the thing that they'd all want to start reacting about and complaining about. And then when I said, well, we're going to use some of this money and buy these recyclable bags that we will give you. Oh, Mayor, that's wonderful. Where can I get some? And you come down here every day and there's people coming in looking for the bag. So it's a program that's got some ups and downs and ins and outs and doesn't have a real, unique direction it's going, but it's, it's nothing that I think that we need to worry a lot about because I think we are on the right track with this recyclable bag that we're given.
I think some neighboring communities are not able to because they don't have Home Rule also.
Mm-hmm.
They might be interested, they just don't, they can't implement it.
And King County considered it, but it would apply to so few businesses which are located outside the bounds of a city that they decided it wasn't really going to be.
I've had both St. Charles and Elgin talk to me about this idea. And both of the, I won't identify who, but very high-ranking people in the governments in both of those towns said, well, I, I just think, I don't want to do this. It's just going to be too much consternation. I got all these other things going on. And so they backed off of it, but they've asked about it.
And I've, I've spoken to lower-level political and community members in both of those cities who are very excited and want to see it happen and are getting resistance and are afraid.
They haven't done it. I mean, you know, their leaders don't do it, so.
And to that, to your point, Abby, the, I think the pressure is growing from the, you know, from younger, younger people. The reality is, we started this program, yes, it was about reducing the use of bags. We don't know if we're effective because we didn't have a baseline yet. We'll, we'll have more metrics to be able to measure that, but what we have done is been able to do other things that are improving the environment. I would call this a huge success. The other piece, the political piece to it, we saw, you know, to take your words, you know, hell and damnation are coming and you've talked about the path and many other things. I don't see anyone in the audience out here that's, you know, opposed to this, you know, coming down here to talk to us how terrible this bag thing is. So I think it's a huge success. I think we're setting a standard here and I think we're going to see other communities follow.
I think the recyclable bag has been a big part of that success.
Absolutely.
Because they, they know now there is a logical, reliable answer to why I don't have to pay the fee because I'm coming in with my recyclable bag that the city gave me, so.
I, I would just say, just to play devil's advocate, I mean, we're talking about 200 grand. So if I'm a citizen and we say something like that, or even what Alderman, you're said, it's like, you're telling me you couldn't go find 200 grand to go do these listed things that you, I mean, to me, I would turn that back on my elected officials and say, go figure it out. You know, it's 200 grand, it's not 2 million.
Taking it from somewhere else. That's what I would tell them.
Well, you know, I, I hear that, but I'm also, sort of my, my thought on this is that you're putting the cost on where the harm is coming from, right? The people using plastic bags are causing harm to the environment, so they should pay for the mitigation that is caused. So I, I mean, I understand that government needs to be responsible to money. You know, we, we shouldn't just be taking money for the sake of taking money. That is not our role and we should be very cautious and aware of that. But plastic bags cause damage and it's important that we have the folks who, you know, I don't know, are causing the damage, who are taking the plastic bags bear a little more of the cost, I think, than, than everyone else. So that's kind of my response to that and that's why I feel okay with this and particularly the recommendations and some of the thoughts that are put out, that we're putting it towards nature restoration, we're putting it towards mitigating the harms these specific items cause, let's specifically fix those harms. It seems to make, seems to make a whole lot of sense and seems to be a responsible use of government power, in my opinion.
Why don't we just ban plastic bags?
You're here.
There are other, there are other jurisdictions that have done it and many countries in Europe have done it and people have figured it out.
To me, that's better.
It is, there just doesn't seem to be a lot of political will to, to do that right now in the state of Illinois, so.
If you follow our lead. We can always, somebody could always propose that.
I mean, one of the things you have to remember is it took a lot to get to this point for the cities in Illinois that have done it, for other places in this country that have done it. It took a lot to get there. So I don't imagine that a ban is going to be an easy thing, you know, until there's enough support and enough realization that we need to get rid of that, you know? I just think it's a, if we really want to solve the problem, what, you know, I don't know.
Point of order. I don't think we're trying to solve the problem. I think we're talking about a policy that was implemented and we're talking about productive uses. That's not part of the conversation.
We're definitely trying to solve a larger environmental problem. That's why this whole thing got brought up. I mean, in my opinion, we're, we're stretching with the bags, like no one likes this, for real. I mean, some people like it from an overarching perspective, but the vast, vast majority of people, I'm confident in this town, would much rather not pay 10 cents and would much rather take it on their own mind to say, I'm not going to use plastic bags because I want to look out for my environment. I don't need my government to charge me money to force me to do something like that.
I hear that. Like that makes a lot of sense to me. Like I hear what you're saying there, but I, I don't know if we can let the perfect be the enemy of the good. You know, it seems like we, we have, we had a goal of let's do our little part to fix a plastic bag problem. Here's our little step we can do. I, I, I think that the perfect solution would be no plastic bags. I know that there's a lot of political pushback to this plan, right? It's hard for us elected officials to do this. A ban would be even harder, so let's do what we can. And so, you know, I don't think you're wrong. Like I think I'm saying that I get what you're saying and it's a good approach and a good view to have on it, but it kind of seems like where we're at today, like let's, let's sort of focus on, on what we got in front of us. Let's focus on what we've done and where we're at.
Just one, one more thing. In terms of, just so everybody who's listening or paying any attention, it's, we, the businesses get four cents back of every six cents. So if there's $100,000 made, the city's only getting 60,000 of it. It's not like we're trying to profit on this thing. We're giving the businesses back money too, so.
And it's not like we're spending it on wild vacations or clothes or anything crazy here.
I get it. I just want to make, make sure that people remember that the businesses get money back too. So for whatever it's worth, it's not like it's a money grab type of situation. I can be perceived that way.
The businesses collected, but I think I saw 130, 129,000.
120,000, 120,000 or something.
Do we need to discuss the RFP?
I was going to ask if anyone had, I, I know I'd emailed Abby a few times back and forth and, and made some slight edits. It's for the most part what we had already discussed. We added a little bit about just making sure that there are no conflicts of interest there, but if anyone has any real comments, I'll put that out and we'll have something hopefully set up by start of next year.
And as much as we still hear a small percentage of complaints about stuff, since this has started, I think it's dwindled to just a few vocal people that always are the same ones that comment on whatever gets posted about it when somebody decides to bring it up. I think it is good that we still talk about how we get this out in front of the public and, you know, educate people more towards why we think this is a good idea, why we did it and why we're continuing to do it.
My intent with the education campaign that you guys had approved is we'll do some work on staff end to probably select a vendor or select one or two for you to make a decision on. And then you can give some additional direction to them about things that you would like them to incorporate into the campaign. And then Lori, myself and other staff, as well as the environmental commission can kind of provide that additional guidance as well. But I think the intent is to not just provide information about why we've done it, but also where it's going, how you can access the programs, here's how you can share your feedback, here's more information as well. So to your point, it's kind of getting that back, getting the funds back into the hands of the community, but also telling them, here's what we're doing with it, here's where it's going, here's how you can take advantage of this. You can come right down to City Hall. We, all three of our windows have the bags available, so you can walk in and go to any one of them and they'll have bags. We just ordered some more, so really trying to get that word out about if you have questions, contact us. Like if you're wondering why this is in place, Alderman can explain it and other things as well.
I do remember looking at that. I think I broke it down, what was it? Are they like $7 a bag? It was like, what did we spend? It was like 13,000 or something in bags? And I'm sorry, I had it up and then my computer died.
It's the same math again.
Yeah.
That sounds about right.
And maybe it's because of the batches we were ordering them in, but like, we got to be able to beat them up for a better price.
So it comes down to a couple of factors. One, we could have purchased those thin plastic bags, which we did not want to do because we didn't want to use something that was plastic. So we went with something that was a natural fiber. They're pretty robust bags. If you haven't grabbed one yet, they hang up there. So we, we made that decision to go with something a little more reusable and holds up as opposed to something that's just cheaper and we can get more of. We, we're still fine with what we've allocated in terms of what we've been able to purchase. We did that in mind, but we wanted to go with something that was a little more real, for lack of a better word, that, you know, people wouldn't feel like, oh, they're just giving this out. It's like, no, this is a quality bag. You can take it, you can use it. If you've picked one up, I hope you've.
And we did a lot of, once we determined what the design of the bag was, we, you know, looked at multiple vendors to see and, and we also looked at price break, you know? Just wasn't sure. We wanted to buy 5,000 out of the gate, even though we have 10,000 households. So I think we've gone in batches of like 500. Yeah.
It's probably.
Yeah.
500 or 1,000 is what we've been buying them in.
1,000 and then 500.
I think we did 1,000, then 500, then 500 more. So we did have to switch vendors halfway through. The first vendor ran out of the first bag, so we have, those are limited edition.
Those are collector's items.
Yes, those are limited edition.
Yeah, the OG bag.
Yes.
I also want to bring back an extraordinary idea of doing artwork, like the kids or whatever, whoever brought it up, but I thought that was a phenomenal idea to put that out to the schools and have like a, you know, I don't know, some sort of, because I just think that creates, again, it's just this better messaging to the whole town. It's like, we're doing, yeah, 100%.
That could be something for the second year of bag giveaways, is to have that as, you know, some tie-in. you know, some tie-in. Jen?
I think the other important part of the education piece is not just for those of us that have been longtime residents, current residents, but we're always getting new residents in the community, and with two new developments that are going in, that's going to bring in additional people that are part of the community, and it'll help educate them on what this program that we're doing and the why for it.
Great point. We can make sure that gets included.
Easy when they're all in GIS to find out where they're at. Send them one. Any other comments? Thank you. Right now, we will move on to project status. Laura?
Thank you. September is emergency preparedness month, and the city recently went through a tabletop exercise, you know, highlighting a, you know, highly probable type of critical incident that could happen here in Batavia. And one of the things that came from that discussion is how helpful it would be if all of our residents knew how they could be best prepared in these challenges. And so the city of Batavia, we've launched a series of emergency preparedness videos, the first of which we put out on social media today, starring Chief Maza and also Chief Hanson. The other thing we're really proud about with this program is that they're the result of a new partnership with Batavia High School students. The videos are created and produced by Riverbank Marketing Interns. They are a group of talented students from Batavia High School, founded by Gary Ricky and Dennis Piran in 2020. The program harnesses the digital skills of both high school and college students, pairing them with local businesses to offer affordable, efficient, and community-based video marketing solutions. So check out, each day we'll launch a new emergency preparedness video. You can find those on the Batavia, Batavia's Facebook page or YouTube channel, or at bataviaill.gov/alertbatavia. And they will teach you wonderful things about where to go to find information, about, you know, creating a go-bag if you have to evacuate your home, thinking about things like the medications that you would need to take with you in that instance, your pets, making sure that if you have pets, there are so many pets that end up homeless in these events, and to be able to know if you've got family who can take them in or what they're going to need. All of those things are really important, and so we're going to be putting that information out there over the course of September. The South River Street Study will have a meeting of elected and appointed officials to discuss the plan and area with Housel Levine. It's tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, October 2nd, and staff is working on scheduling an open house and focus meetings with property owners and businesses in that area as well. The fire department participated in Batavia Park District's Wayback Wheels Car Show, and we used our antique Persh Fire Engine as part of that event, and the fire department had a lot of fun participating, and kids really seemed to enjoy the antique fire truck. The Batavia Police Department joined the Midstates Organized Crime Information Center. This law enforcement network provides nationwide and regional information sharing opportunities for us. It will bolster investigative support as well as information and intelligence sharing. And the network provides officer safety deconfliction capabilities as well as resources for officer wellness. Just a reminder that it's going to be a little bit difficult getting, in fact, you will not be able to get through the intersection of Prairie and Wilson on September 14th, 15th, and 16th. So avoid the area on our website and on our social media, as well as there was a newspaper article talking about the detours around that area. So check there for maps on how to avoid that. And then in conjunction with the upcoming Road Diet Project, the Electric Division is working to replace all of the street lighting fixtures along Batavia Avenue with new LED lights. This change will help improve the lighting quality and visibility along that road at nighttime. Does anybody have any questions for me about other projects?
I have one question.
Yes.
I know we got an email about the grant through Foster's office for the bike path work down at wastewater treatment plant, to reroute that. I would like to see us keep that money in that area, if that just means we get to do a little bit of the bank stabilization and preparation for that to go through there. I think, in the spirit of what we were going to try to do down there in total, that I think we should do that work, even if it means just a small section at the northern end of that, because I think it's really important that we work on as much of the bank stabilization work as we can in that area, so that we protect the millions and millions and millions of investment that we put in to the wastewater treatment plant. So even though I know we can't do the project in total, I think we need to keep that money there towards that.
So just what Alan is referring to is initially Congressman Foster's office had recommended $8.2 million, which would have funded 100% of the project to extend the bike path on the west bank of the river, along the east side of the wastewater treatment plant. It's so expensive because there's not enough space there to do a wide enough standard path, and so that path would need to be slightly cantilevered out over the water, but doing so would offer us the opportunity to do riverbank stabilization over there. Unfortunately, we were informed by Congressman Foster's office that the Appropriations Committee had cut our funding down to just $1 million, which represents only 12.5% funding for the project. So it would be difficult for us to come up with the, you know, remainder in order to complete that project. My experience with the food pantry project, which is the same type of discretionary grant funding, is that a lot depends upon how they title it in the congressional record when the project is finally approved. So if they say bike path, we may have to stick to doing some type of bike path with it. However, as I said, it just depends how they word it, and then we'll, I think we should wait to see if we actually get the grant, because we know that we see in the news and about the federal budget, that they are nowhere close, and, you know, they haven't even agreed that they aren't going to shut down the government over not having a budget at this point. So remains to be seen. Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion about that, even if we get that, because I can't imagine coming up with that money. We have other things, we've talked about.
Absolutely.
That we have enough disagreement about, like whitewater parks and the like, and that won't, although it'd be cool, it's not going to like drive any development or anything in that area. It's just going to be a cool bike path where we just like rerouted it, we already just did that. So that would seem like we'd be wasting money. I'd be all for stabilizing the bank there, and if it's written in a way that allows us to just stabilize the bank, that's fantastic, but I cannot imagine spending the money just to put the bike path there.
The, the other is, you know, if we would be allowed to do so, we could possibly utilize that funding for the switchback that we were just talking about that's on the east side of the river. But again, a discussion that we need to have, once the appropriation has been made, you know, I think it's probably not good for him to give it back.
Because my, my main concern would be stabilization aspect of it, and then whenever or if ever it could be built on top of it, we would not have to worry about the bank below it. You know, because that, to me, as close as that is to the structures we have there, that needs to be a priority to get that done before we end up with an issue where it, you know, has to be done immediately.
And I think a million dollars gets you about 60 feet.
Yeah.
Wasn't there originally another option for that area, pedestrian bridge, go over to the ball field, that was actually surprisingly cheaper?
But, but it wasn't $1 million, but we could take a look at that again. I think it was back when we looked at this, it was more than three years ago, when Trotter did some estimates for it, and my memory says that they said $5 million at that time for the bike path that we're talking about, and 3 million for the pedestrian bridge, but that's just from memory, so I don't know.
Laura, you are correct that it was estimated to be $3 million to have a bridge going to the east and then coming back again.
Yes.
So that probably has been inflated to probably 5 to 6 million dollars, in that range.
What, it'd be coming back again? I thought the Clark Island Bridge would be the back again.
So, yeah, you will cross to the east side to the ball field, you will then come back to the Clark Island again. So there will be nothing on the west side.
Right.
So again, I think we should wait to see what Congress does, and then at that time, I think we can look at a number of different options at that time.
Does anybody have any others? If not, I'll look for motion for adjournment. And second time, Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's 903.